Very good. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of February 27, 2019. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Steve, as always, if you'd be kind enough to hand over to the big screen so the folks at home can see some of the agenda items that we'll be discussing this evening and decide how long they would like to hang on with us. Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Steve. It's technically the first meeting of the month because the last meeting was snowed out. So we are going to do the supervisor's report. Each month, we give a summary for our taxpayers of the financial condition of the township. We started the month with an opening balance of $5,174,243. And we had receipts of $267,804, dispersments of $502,987, for an ending balance of $4,939,060. This is for the period ending January 31st. You have in your packets not only the statements, but some proposed budget adjustments from our bookkeeper, Ann Conway. We have some revenue associated with E-Waste Day to offset some of the expenses. And we are going out for a grant for a part of those other funds. We did get a tree donation from Red Hook Rotary that we would like to at least acknowledge. We had our fourth quarter sales tax figure of $95,858 come in. And January, we booked an amount of $22,549. Where, Harry, did we book that dollar amount? Which account?
It says the Green CPF Funds Master. The CPF.
The CPF, yeah, exactly. And so we are now running, we have a balance in the Community Preservation Fund of $1.38 million. As you know, the voters of this town back in 2007 approved a surcharge on purchases of property above the county median. And it has served us all very well. Okay, I think there are very minor budget adjustments. And you also have your monthly variance report. Are there any questions on any of the financials? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the supervisor's report?
Sub move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the budget adjustments, is there a motion to approve those as well?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. At this time, we will have the clerk's report. Sue?
Town Clerk Monthly Report for January 2019. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, $5,142.88. Amount remitted to New York Ag and Markets for the state in Uther Program, $39. Amount paid to New York Department of State for marriage licenses, $22.50. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation, $23.62. For a total, state, county, and local revenue of $5,228. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a fall and true statement of all fees and monies received by May Sumacan, Town Clerk of Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And that's it. The only other thing that I have to say is I've had for about a month the Town Clerk 2018 Financial Report and the tax, which is sitting in my office right now. I forgot to bring it, so I will pass it over to you later. But that's been prepared for 2018.
Okay, very good, Sue. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
Aye.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We also have our annual reports from our two justice courts. Justice Treibwasser reports for the period ending 2018. Revenues of $53,969, which includes fines of $31,000 and surcharges of $21,000. The surcharges being the fees that get passed on to the state of New York. And we have for Justice Martin, $41,622 with fines of $22,761. All of our financial reports are available in the clerk's office. And at our next meeting, we will have year-end 2018 reports to share with all of our residents. Okay, very good. It is about 8:00, sorry, 7:40. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is with regard to a local law A, proposed of 2019, entitled "A Local Law to Establish a Community Choice Aggregation Program for the Township." And if you've been following along in previous meetings, what the town is embarking on, we hope, is joining with other municipalities to collectively go out and purchase energy for our residents and our business owners. And because we are working together, we expect to be able to get that energy supplied with 100% renewable energy and add a discount to the current rates that our residents are paying through the utility or an ESCO if they've taken the step of actually choosing an ESCO to supply. As you know, your utility is now responsible for delivering your energy. You have the opportunity to choose where that energy comes from. And some of the partners that we are joining with, we expect with this renewable high lens. And Glenn is with us again tonight. Thank you, Glenn, for any questions. Or the City of Beacon, Cold Spring, Town of Fishkill, Phillips Town, Marble Town, and the City of Poughkeepsie. And so we hope to have some very good buying power joining with those municipalities. So that said, I'd like to open up the floor. Is there any comments from the public at this public hearing?
We have the reason.
Local law notice first. Yeah, Sue, would you like to do that?
Sure. Public hearing notice. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on February 27, 2019 at 7:35 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law, number A, proposed of 2019, entitled "A Local Law to Establish a Community Choice Aggregation Program for the Town of Red Hook." The proposed local law would amend the town code of the Town of Red Hook by adding a new Chapter 55 entitled "Community Choice Aggregation Program" to select one or more energy suppliers on behalf of customers who do not opt out of the program. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated February 15, 2019, Sumacan Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook. And as always, this was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal, posted on the web, posted at the Town Hall, and sent to the two villages.
Very good. Thank you very much, Sue. And as the notice references, this program requires that we notify all our residents and businesses. And it has an opt-out feature if they wish to, for some reason, get their energy service from somebody else besides our chosen ESCO. And we are working with dual assets on this program. Would anybody like to speak at this public hearing? Okay. Very good. Well, we can entertain, if you like, a motion to close the public hearing. I'll take that as a nod to folks in the audience who are supportive of this. I know some of you very well and your endeavors. So I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
Sub move, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And this will be on the agenda. It's actually our first item after we dispense with our public hearings at 7:45. Time for our second public hearing. It's with regard to local law B, proposed of 2019, entitled "A Local Law to Enact an Extension of a Existing Moratorium That We Have in Place Currently." And that is on large-scale commercial extractive operations in the Town of Red Hook we identified over a year ago that we felt our zoning was inadequate in addressing issues like mining, water collection and bottling, and timber harvesting. And so we've had a subcommittee that's been working on recommendations. And in fact, just last night, we had, I think, a very productive workshop. I think we're making very good progress to having a draft of that law in near-finished form for more public input. So we do need additional time. We're very close. But we do have local law B, which is requesting a 90-day extension of that moratorium. And so Sue, would you like to read the public notice on that public hearing?
Sure. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on February 27, 2019 at 7:45 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law, number B, of 2019, entitled "A Local Law to Enact an Extension Ending June 4, 2019, of a Moratorium on Large-Scale Commercial Extractive Operations in the Town of Red Hook, and to amend the Town of Red Hook zoning law to implement the recommendations of the Town Comprehensive Plan Regarding Resource Protection, Specifically Aquifer Protection, Water Resources for Public Water Supply, Erosion and Sediment Control, Extractive Operations Including Soil Mining, Timber Harvesting, and to Study the Secondary Impacts of Water Withdrawal and Surface Extraction." Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given the opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations would be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated February 15, 2019, Sumacan Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook. And this was also posted, this was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal, was posted on the web, and it was sent to surrounding municipalities. It was sent down to Duchess County Planning and to the Town Board of Lawson.
Okay, very good. Would anybody like to speak on this public hearing? Okay, that's okay. We've got a lot of presentations on the agenda this evening. Thank you all for your contributions. We've had some folks participating in that subcommittee, and it's been very, very helpful for us. At this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We do have discussion of this on the agenda later this evening. We will not be taking a vote on this local law because we need a couple of those referrals back from the various planning board. So we do expect to vote on this at our next meeting on March 4.
On the extension?
On the extension on March 4. Yeah. Okay, so why don't we dive right into... Yeah, is there any general public comment this evening anybody would like to make? Okay, hearing none. If we could, maybe we could skip right into number two, which is a presentation on the Watershed Community Group. We have Karen Schneller-McDonald here with us. And Karen, I'm going to hand you over mine each DMIP. And maybe, Karen, if, I know how talented you are, if you could, while you're doing that, maybe tell folks, plug that in and tell folks a little bit about the Watershed Community Group and how it got started.
How the group got started?
Started and who's in it and what you all have been doing.
It's a group that got started about three years ago. Originated with some interest at Bard College in starting a water lab. And we've grown since then to a community group that meets once a month. And our mission is to gather information and present information about water and the watershed to the town. And I can't focus on two, okay. And anyway, that's just it in a nutshell. It's a community group, but it is affiliated with Bard College and...
So you have residents, you have subject...
Residents, educators, students. We have a lot of interest from some of the agencies that have supported our work of cooperative extension, the DEC and Riverkeeper, County. And our primary goal is to provide information. I gotta focus on what I'm doing here for a minute.
Okay, no worries.
I'm not as talented as you said.
Well, I think you are. I'm wondering, Steve, would you be kind enough to see if you could move the mic closer to Karen while she gets her presentation, so...
Okay, we're good now.
I don't think there's enough cable running.
To get there? Okay. Can we get closer?
Yeah.
Let it work, let it work.
There you go.
Is that okay? Is it okay if I stand?
You can do whatever you would like.
Am I in the way?
No, no.
We can hear you.
How's that? Is that good enough? Okay. What was I gonna say?
Very good. And can you all see the screen from where you are? Because we can tilt the screen a little bit if that would be...
Everybody see, okay?
All right.
Last summer, the Watershed Group put together what's called a scorecard. It's a series of questions about water protection that was developed by Riverkeeper. And it's a new project from Riverkeeper. We decided to participate. So we filled out the forms and presented them to the town. And as a result of what we did, it was kind of doing a survey of how well the town is protecting its water resources and what could still be done. How much of what's available is the town using to protect resources? And how can those things be improved for future protection? So we developed some recommendations as a result of that. And this project is an offshoot of those recommendations. Our scorecard produced 10 general recommendations. We took two of those and we expanded them into this project, which we started last September or October. And there were a small group of four of us on the leadership team for the Watershed Group. Sheila Buff, who's here, Lindsay Drew, who's here, who's also our manager of our water lab, and Marco Spodak, who's also here. And we worked on putting this together so that we could continue the project we started with Riverkeeper and see if we could provide more for the town. I want to start with this slide because it gets everybody on the same page from all the directions we've been coming from to get here. This gets us focused right in on water. I like this picture because it's so clean. Everything looks so clean in it. But unfortunately, this is more realistic of what the water cycle looks like. The things that we do affect our water above ground and below ground. And how we deal with that depends largely on our point of view. Are we interested in building things, building sites, protecting farmland, recreation, protecting wildlife, mitigating flooding? All of these, these things affect how we look at water. In the Watershed Group, our view is taking the science approach of looking at it from a watershed perspective. And this has some advantages in that water is obviously all connected above ground and below ground. And a lot of times what you do in one part of a watershed will affect water in another part of the watershed. Sometimes when a problem arises that has to do with water, to fix it or to figure out how the problem started, you have to go off that site and look at the larger watershed to figure out, you know, what's happening, what's going wrong. Sometimes flood mitigation falls into that category. To fix a problem at a particular bridge, you might have to look at where is that extra water coming from and how could it be dissipated or stopped before it gets to the bridge? Anyway, there are a lot of different ways to look protecting water within that context of a watershed. So what we did for this project was just develop some general goals to tackle the problem of looking at the watershed, looking at all of the studies and reports that have already been done. We're not out here to reinvent the wheel, just to kind of reorganize the information and put it into a form we can use. And then identify how some things can be improved and track progress. And I'll get to these a little bit later. But this is the beginning of how we look at the science of a watershed and how we look at these features in a watershed and how we relate those to water problems, like contaminated water. Where does that come from? What can you do about it? Well, understanding how the whole system works helps you figure out those problems and helps you better identify solutions to those problems. So we didn't want to leave anything out. And so we looked at all of these nine different areas. Water quality, impervious surfaces, small wetlands and streams, ecosystems, buffers, forests, floodplains and banks, water withdrawals, culverts and dams. And we tried to look at most of the studies that are available out there that have looked at water, specifically in the Town of Red Hook or Duchess County, and also specifically looking at issues that affect a lot of different communities here in the Hudson Valley. This is just a sampling. The report that we have provided for you has a whole page of selected references that we used to put this together. I know that you on the Town Board have seen most of these. And you've seen hundreds, probably hundreds, of recommendations on how to protect water, you know, how to deal with flooding, how to deal with climate change, how to deal with climate, all of this. So we tried to look at these to see what we could call out. And we came up with a set of 33 recommendations divided into five sections. Kind of condensed those watershed characteristics into five sections. And our recommendations are everything from things that might require additional code changes to maintenance and management of resources that are already in good condition in the town, but that we're interested in protecting and keeping them that way and preventing future problems from happening. They also tackle things that are problems today, like flooding throughout the town, and look at, you know, taking care of the overall water resources throughout the whole watershed. Probably from this list, if I had to pick one recommendation that kind of stands out from all the rest, it's buffers. Because when we set up buffers that work along all of our water's edges, and that includes streams, wetlands, ponds, we affect a lot of these other things. We improve water quality, take care of some flood mitigation. And because through the Watershed Group's meetings, we've noticed that these three things seem to be the focus of people that come to our meetings. These are the concerns, water quality, water supply, and flood mitigation. Those are the things everybody really wants to do something about or explore more about. So every one of our recommendations addresses at least one of these three concerns. And because we put our recommendations in table form, we included in that table which of these each recommendation addresses. First thing we did was put together a map so we could see everything that we're trying to deal with, all of the, at least, surface waters that we can map. Our map is a little different from the usual wetlands and streams and lakes map in that it includes hydroic soils and poorly rained soils because these areas are usually wetlands too. And they're not usually included in the maps that the state provides or that the National Wetland inventory provides. Anyway, that's our starting point. And then we also noticed that it's easier to identify problems in a watershed if you divide things into smaller pieces. Watershed, even though the Sauk Hill is a relatively small watershed, it's still pretty big and it's kind of still hard to get a handle on some of the issues that might be coming up through the watershed. So there are 21 tributaries to the Sauk Hill, and each of those tributaries drains a little mini watershed. And that's what you see there in all those different colors. If we look at identifying problems in these little mini watersheds, it's often easier to come up with solutions to those problems because it's a smaller scale that you're working with. So DEC also recognizes that, as you can see from these sample maps from an online tool that DEC recently developed as part of their trees for trips program. But it's a tool that provides specific information to towns. This is the Sauk Hill watershed. And the information about the Sauk Hill watershed on the website is really useful when you look at how to plan for protecting the town's water resources. When we divide things into these smaller segments, we can compare them. For example, the darker green means there's more canopy cover, which is a good thing. The darker red on the right means that there's a higher percent of impervious surfaces or surfaces that water can't soak in through. And so we can compare those two things by using these maps and by using other tools that other people have already developed that are available to us. The net result of all these tools is putting together information and recommendations where we can begin to track progress over time. And instead of coming up with a recommendation here and a problem here and a code, a need for new ordinance or code here, we can start to put numbers on some of the goals that we're trying to reach that indicate watershed health. For example, impervious surfaces, the magic number is 10%. And all the research shows that once your little watershed basin has more than that in impervious surfaces, then you're likely to start affecting water quality. And you don't have to pass a law that says nobody can put in any more impervious surfaces. But if you know that, then you can... But if you know that, then you can design, design land use projects so that you're encouraging people to, to put in fewer impervious surfaces so that you won't exceed that goal and it's, it'll be a proactive measure so that you never really create that problem. Buffers, the magic number is 100 feet. Culverts and bridges, we look at climate change expecting to increase the peak flood flows by 22, I think it's like 22 to 28% in this region. So that's that much additional water that we have to be able to convey. Wetlands, the magic number is 10%, 10% cover throughout your watershed to help soak up all that floodwater. Contaminants, there are a lot of numbers and they vary contaminant by contaminant. And then for forested areas in your watershed, keeping them at or about 60% of the total is how we achieve watershed health. And there's so much information out there that is, it's almost overwhelming. What I've put up here is, there's a map from DEC that shows all the septic system locations and speedies permits in the town. Another map from a flood mitigation study that shows areas in need of restoration. And another study from DEC that looks at phosphorus contamination and which types of land uses generate the most phosphorus. And that one was done specifically for the Sauk Hill watershed as well. The details are in the written report that we provided to you. We're always open for questions, for providing more, more information if you'd like it. And we also realized that solving some of these problems and tackling water issues is not always as easy as it looks when you put this stuff up on a screen. It's time consuming, it takes resources and it takes money, and we realize all of that. But on that note, I want to add with one additional point of view that I want to leave you with because anytime we're looking at protecting water, realizing it's going to cost something to achieve some of these goals, we also have to recognize the cost of not protecting our water resources. And some towns, even towns in our region have found this out the hard way. Our watershed is in relatively good shape. And so that's why we're encouraging you to look at maybe some proactive things that we can do to keep it that way. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Karen, may I borrow the HDMI cord from you? Thank you all very much. I know there are a lot of volunteers here tonight associated with the watershed community group. If you've been to one of the monthly meetings, there's generally, what, she'll maybe 30 people, 40 people at each meeting. It's, it's, it's quite impressive.
You have to be older than us. Or next to you.
Speak up a little bit, Sheila, if you want people to hear you.
We usually meet at the Elmendorf.
Okay.
And on the third Wednesday of the month at 7:30. And we have refreshments and we usually have a short presentation about a topic of interest. And what we like best is we wrap up with community conversation. So anybody who's got something to talk about relating to the watershed is welcome to come and raise it and we'll talk about it.
Very good. Thank you. And thank all the volunteers. We wouldn't get much of what we do accomplish here in the town. We wouldn't be the envy of other communities if it wasn't for all the volunteers that do terrific work for us. Thank you. We will take a look at the recommendations and we can put that presentation up on the website. We can figure out a format. We can get it up there so others can see. Okay. Very good. Thanks again. All right. We have, we can, can we dispense quickly with local law A, our community choice aggregation? We have Glenn with us here, but he's got to drive back to Westchester. Is that right, Glenn?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's get to agenda item number one. I think we have covered all of the issues associated with it or questions that folks had. Is there any other questions, discussion that you would like to have on community choice aggregation? I think it's very exciting. So for tonight's agenda, it's just to pass the local law. And then at a future meeting, we'll be working on a services agreement with Jewel Assets, who is our aggregator, I guess. Is that the correct term? All right. Well, very good. This action that we're taking tonight, we're beginning the process or continuing the process will really take a very bold step forward with reducing our emissions here in our community. When you think of all the households, the over 2,000 households and businesses within the township in addition to that, that will, provided they don't opt out, will be getting their energy from 100% renewable resources. It's going to make a significant step forward with our climate action plan. So I'm very excited and we look forward to getting this done. And we're, we're on a projection for sometime summer, fall for having that. Is that what we think?
Summer, yeah.
Summer? Okay. Very good. Well, I, I would like to move that we go ahead and we approve local law A. We'll call it now local law number one, two? Do we know what our number one?
For local law, I think, yeah.
Should be one, okay. A local law to establish a community choice aggregation program for the town of Red Hook in ISO MOO. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Right.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think we covered the 90-day extension. That we'll need to take action on that at the next meeting. Recreation park updates. So we have with us again our engineering firm, Ty and Bond. Brandy and Ryan are kind enough to come out tonight to talk to us about the plan and potentially a slight change in the plan. And the plan in context with other recreational improvements that we know are underway and need to, or, and/or needs to be done in the near future. So.
Excuse me. Who in this board who worked on this? There are five members of this board here.
We, we have the full responsibility. Yeah.
Who worked on this design?
Well, Brandy is.
I mean of the, of the board.
Who worked on it?
Who, yeah. Who contributed to the creation of this design and made the decisions on the board? Who on the board?
Made the decision.
Not me. I'm on the committee, the recreation committee.
Yeah, this is something that our engineers wanted to show us if we are contemplating. They ran this by their sports expert. And so they wanted to discuss with us a possible change to the plan. And so that's what they're here for tonight.
Well, obviously, but, but in, in what way was this board included in that?
It hasn't started, Harry.
Oh, come on.
They wanted to make.
Obviously, a lot of effort went into this. I heard, I heard rumors in town hall, but, but no, none, no one of us, as far as I know, who were elected to, to govern this town or included in, in establishing this.
Nothing's been established, Harry. They, they spoke to their sports expert and they wanted to pass on the feedback that they got. Brandy can explain it to you. And then about the possibility of actually having the challenger field on the east side of the, and to see whether or not we would be interested in.
Have, what, what experts have been, have been, what expert advice did we get for this?
Well, that's why Brandy is here to make that presentation to you.
Fine. And, and I will submit they are experts in, in engineering. But how about, how about getting advice from, from people who deal with, with the challenged people who will be using it?
Okay. Okay. So can, can.
Have we, have we, have we had discussions with, with the medical kind of people who would be, who would, who would make the recommendations and, and would also give us some, some idea of the number of people that it would serve based on, on their knowledge of the community?
So Harry, we, I think we've covered a lot of these questions in, in the last year and change when we've been talking about the park.
What occupational therapists have you?
Okay. So may we move on so that Brandy can make her presentation this evening and then we can address some of your questions or at least attempt to address some of your question?
Can I ask, can I ask, ask Brandy or the engineers? Have you ever discussed this with an occupational therapist?
We have not discussed this with an occupational therapist, but when we were initially contacted and discussed the challenger field back February of last year, our first order of business was to find out how many other challenger fields are in the area.
Well, I, I know that, but, but I have, I have had long discussions with two occupational therapists whose, whose profession is, is, is serving this population.
Sure.
That this would, and, and I would think, I would want their, their input, I think, before I'd want the engineers' input.
Well, with all due respect to their expertise, you know, we do a considerable amount of recreation field design work. Our in-house expert is based out of our Portsmouth, New Hampshire office and he does recreational fields all over the northeast. But in addition, as civil engineers on a regular basis, a very large part of our practice is making sure that handicap accessibility issues are addressed in, in all our designs. And, and we've worked with the town for a number of years on a variety of handicap accessibility improvements. And so as I was saying before, last February, one of our first orders of business was to go out to the nearest challenger field that's similar to what the town's been contemplating for some time, which is in the city of, in the town of Webster in the Rochester area. And they call it their miracle field. And we talked with them about how the concept came to be, some of the design challenges. So they've actually got the field constructed, some of the things they would change since they've had it constructed, some of the particular issues of some people of varying abilities because you want to be able to serve the broadest range of people. So that's where we started. And so, you know, as you will all recall, initially, we were looking specifically at Rec Park West. And we've been working with the town now for about a year. And we made some observations coming out of the, the, the work that was done this last fall with the recreation field, athletic field needs assessment. And also just being present in the community, we've noticed that there's a lot of movement around recreation park improvements. And I think there was some comment either from you, Harry, or from Sarah about being a little more comprehensive in the look that we're taking. Obviously, there's a strong desire to be as efficient with funds that are expended for rec park improvements as possible. And so out of, are you able to control the slides or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So just as far as graphically here, the view on the left side of the screen is the land in totality for the rec park. And, you know, I think previously there's been discussion on rec park west, rec park east. It's one recreation park. And the town acquired the land on the west side of Linden Avenue specifically to be able to have more capacity for a wider variety of, of recreational needs in the community. On, on the right side of the screen is a view of the tweak to the master plan that we wanted to suggest to you guys. We think it helps achieve the goals that are consistent with the master plan that were originally put together for Rec Park West many years ago, but also addresses the information that's come to us over the last year and through the athletic field needs assessment. And so I just want to sort of recap where we are and talk about some of the funding opportunities that have been accessed. And also just talk about how we thought this could be phased in a very logical way and, and achieve the town's objectives for recreation park improvements. So you don't mind going to the next slide. So in the summer and fall of 2018, as I was just saying, you know, we had updated the master plan focusing specifically on Rec Park West. We had added some trail improvements to connect to Winnicke's V2V section of the trail. The trailhead would link to the parking area that could serve an additional athletic, diamond shaped athletic field. And in this sketch here, we're showing a field that would be the challenger field at this location and then providing three multipurpose rectangular fields for a variety of play. The ultimate master plan also included some improvements related to pavilion and concession facilities, restroom facilities for the convenience of users on, on that side of the park. Based on some, some community feedback, we took a step back and took a look at athletic field needs. Basically, through that athletic fields needs assessment, I think what, what came to light most prominently was the, the diamond shaped fields are used fairly heavily. So that's your baseball type sports, softball, baseball, all the different levels up from the little kids through to the adults. And then looking at park standards for similar sized communities, rectangular purpose, or rectangular multipurpose fields were also something that seems underrepresented as a town-known facility, recognizing that there's a private facility. So that's, that was the finding in the athletic field assessment. Through the athletic field needs assessment, what we really got to do was spend time looking at the existing fields and talking with John and Doug about how those fields are being used, but also simultaneously looking at the facilities that are over there, the parking, the pavilion, the concessions. And also recognizing that that middle softball field, and I think the next slide will show this. Oh, yep, that's okay. I can, I can back up then.
Okay.
So the middle field has lights on it. And a synthetic turf field, which would serve the challenger purpose, but also could be used in a multitude of other ways, would be best served if it was illuminated. And it, it turns out that the lights in that middle field are, are quite deficient currently. They're not providing the right level of illumination for field, for field play. And it was something that's been in the rec parks budget to replace in the near future. So we said, well, maybe there's an opportunity to really get the best use out of a synthetic turf field that would serve not only a challenger population, but a whole variety of users at the field. This would be in conjunction with a, a number of rec park improvements that are proposed also on Rec Park East.
Robert, if you don't mind. Can I just clarify to you real quick on the, on the previous slide? Just to be clear, we didn't vote to update the master plan yet, right? We just discussed it, right? Unless I'm wrong.
No, I think we forwarded the project, we approved the bond resolution with the description of the project.
Right, but we didn't actually update the master plan yet, right? We still have our.
We did for purposes of, we did for purposes of the, the plan that we approved the financing for last fall.
We approved the financing?
No, 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 but, but the master plan was what we reviewed for secret purposes before we did the bond resolution. So we did in fact approve that plan.
Okay.
So this is, this is, this discussion is around a change to that.
So it is already approved the way it's showed there right now?
Right, correct.
That's our current master plan?
Correct, correct, okay.
The second thing I just want to clarify, because I know that the idea of having that challenger field on the middle softball field came up over the summer during public discussions. So at what point did your team start to really like look into like that being a, a better option? Because we, I remember during those public discussions, it was considered much more expensive to, to do that and sort of like put off the table. So I'm just curious like what the timeline. So I'm just curious like what the timeline there like how it kind of came back to the middle softball field. Because when we approved this, it was pretty clear that the idea of having the challenger field in the middle softball field was off the table in terms of being like an efficient fiscal option. So how did we come back to, I'm just trying to understand.
It well, that's a big question, Sarah.
Actually, I know we hadn't had any meetings about more options.
And this is, this is the, this is where we're at. So we we've gone through these steps and we've said, maybe it does make more sense. Because there's, if we look at the next slide, there are a number of other ADA improvements that are proposed for Rec Park East. So really in that context, you know, your existing concession facilities over there that received a block grant for removal of barriers and improving handicap accessibility. There's the playground project, which is going to be ADA accessible. So those are two things that really are sort of have a focus around both park improvement, but also ADA improvements. And so thinking sort of comprehensively, like if we're if we're upgrading things for ADA and we need to redo lights on that middle field anyway, you know, there starts to be sort of a critical mass of improvements that are happening that that we think and we've discussed it amongst ourselves, we think is worth the town thinking about.
I just remember, sorry, and I'm not trying to beat a dead horse. I remember all those things coming up over the summer, so just still, I'm stuck.
Actually, we didn't really get into this until October.
No, no, but I'm saying we, those items were brought up in the public discussions over the summer.
We, any of them?
They were just ideas, right, Sarah?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand.
Right, so what Brandy is saying is.
They were just an idea, then the idea changes.
So what Brandy is saying is, I think, don't origin your mouth, but as further work was done with the rec committee on other issues that came up, you said, you know what, there's a lot of stuff happening, so let's bring it back for discussion, and which is what you're doing tonight.
I mean, the point is, we we heard the community input. But, you know, you take things in its totality, not just in individual pieces. So hearing that, looking at at, you know, in the fall, knowing that these other ADA improvements are coming into play, trying to think how to be most efficient with improvements. We discussed internally and then mentioned to Robert, this may be a way where you get a real focus on ADA improvements on Rec Park East. It has a lot of synergy with other grant funded projects that are happening. It doesn't mean you're abandoning the west side. I mean, Winnicke was successful in getting a grant for trailhead and parking. And so the planning that's gone into the trailhead and the trailhead parking, I think, is the first step in any sort of future improvements that could happen over there. And and so we were trying to think of it in a stepwise fashion, you know, what what can you do based on an overall master plan and marry that with funding opportunities that the town's been successful in receiving to achieve objectives of recreation park improvements?
Yeah, and just to to try to answer Harry's question, so Brandy had contacted me and said, you know, we showed this to our sports guy expert and said, you know, ideally, you'd like to have, which we kind of intuitively know, you'd like to have the artificial multi-use field and and it's going to be used by all all groups. It would be nice if you could have that paired with the lights, we knew that. But I said, okay, you want to put something together for the board to take a look at?
The board, the board has been excluded from any discussion for six months. We were not told dittily about it and and there is another.
Brandy, this is, this is, this is that moment where it's being shown to you.
And in the same, in the six month period, we were not told anything. And when I questioned people, I did couldn't even get an answer.
Harry, I'm sorry, I I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, I'm sure you are.
Two months ago, we passed a revised bond resolution.
And let me go a step further, let me go a step further. We need input from 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 professional people in in the medical who deal with these needy people. And and we need. Occupational therapist? Occupational therapist. Does that change my mind? Well, well, they they will, they will, we need to find out.
There, there's a lot of different medical professionals that could be insulted.
The population, we need to know the population we have, we need, we need to know how they. I think they have that already from the needs assessment that came in, right? That was pretty thorough. Harry, we, not the population of the people who would be using it or need it. Oh, the needs group. And and the occupational, there is a, somebody who's really actually active in the town, who's an occupational therapist, who is would be willing to step in.
So if if I can just interject, Harry. So as part of the design effort and partially because the county is involved in funding a lot of the projects with ADA improvements, what they have recommended to us in the past, and so this is from Dutch Scanning Planning, it's given us. And I believe they provide this recommendation to all sorts of design consultants, is that once you prepare your engineering plans to consult with toconic resources down in Poughkeepsie, there there are experts in accessibility issues and they work with both in varying people of varying abilities as well as aging populations about access issues. And and we have submitted plans for other communities down to them and you get very constructive feedback from them, very practical feedback. And and that's a recommendation that the counties had, I think, for a number of years. So we've consulted with them at at many stages of projects from sort of conceptually, we want to think about putting a grant together. What are your thoughts on how we could remove barriers for access? They give you very good feedback, but they also will provide a design review and give you feedback at that stage of the game as well.
Okay. Let's proceed, please, with the presentation.
So again, go go, so as far as the timing is concerned, I I can honestly say, Harry, that just because of the holidays, you know, I wasn't around in December, so we did, you know, I think.
Well, they don't expect you to you to tell me.
December, January, February.
Occasionally, I run into you in the restaurant.
And you didn't have an early February meeting, and I think January was around reorganization. So this has not been because I didn't want to come and present this idea to the board.
It's not your problem, it's this board's problem.
I wanted to, you know, we we talked about this very end of the year, just trying to be creative about how to proceed with the solution. With with a lot of feedback about the lighting situation in that middle field and the fact that those lights do need to be replaced. We put forward a a concept and we're here tonight to talk to you about it and we'll answer any of your questions. But, you know, there's already a proposal to at the top of the screen there, update the existing concessions facility for improvements to accessibility. There's currently not a path that goes to it that provides an accessible route. The concrete around the building is has bobbled and heaved over the years. The bathrooms need improvements and.
I have been involved in that.
Didn't you and I do the sidewalk for it with?
Yeah, probably.
The folks from C D E G, okay.
Yeah, but I've been over there a number of days with them.
Right, so so there was that happening. And so that that's good, I mean, why not leverage that improvement and and, you know, continue the thought of those accessibility improvements to providing the synthetic turf field on the east side. And what we what we liked about that is after doing the athletic field needs assessment, Ryan's here and he can chime in if he's got anything wrong about the needs assessment. But there's pretty heavy youths on the baseball fields and there are diamond sport players that their needs are not necessarily being met.
Actually, you don't have to sell me on that, I I think it's the best idea out of everything we talked about. In terms of doing that to the east, the the putting the main field in the east, in the east part.
Okay.
But I have problems with the west part.
Okay, well, we'll we'll get to the west part in a minute then. So, you know, it fits in the area, so that's a good thing. It's slightly larger because we want to accommodate the men's softball. So it's larger than the synthetic turf field that was originally proposed on the west side. But we can still have it serve multipurpose function. It can be striped for for both the rectangular use as well as the diamond use. And we even have talked about how we can do some intermediate striping to provide for a wider age range of players. So, you know, accommodate some of the the younger kids as well as the adults. The challenge with this is that this field is currently used through the end of October, is that right? Through the end of October by the men's league. And so from a schedule standpoint, we would want this to be constructed in the fall, so say September, October, November. And that would truncate the ability of the men's league to play through the fall. But once it's installed, it's available to be played on. So it's got an immediate startup period. And so, you know, we think this makes sense over there, so we offer that for your consideration. We can talk about the numbers after that. Do you mind going to the next slide? As far as just sort of thinking about grants that have been provided, et cetera, we understand that, you know, Winnicke received the grant for trailhead improvements. The master plan did include trails, it's part of the V two V effort. So we are looking at providing driveway access and and trailhead improvements, maybe a kiosk that's got some mapping on it. And that first first leg of the trail. Other things we understand, it's not under our our curvy, but we understand is occurring in the spring are the playground updates. And then at some point, hopefully, late spring or midsummer, some ADA upgrades through that block grant fund that the town is successful in getting. Then, as I was mentioning, if we're moving forward with the synthetic field on Rec Park East, that would be in in the fall. That happens because the synthetic turf installers are very busy at schools through the summer. And so they're not available to install synthetic fields until fall on non-school projects. You know, we want to try and and progress the process so that you guys could be out to bid for a fall construction. And simultaneous with that, install the new lighting. Basically, they need totally new lighting. John had done some work, I think, last summer, right, getting some pricing on on lighting. But that it would be one comprehensive project to do the lighting and the synthetic turf all at one time. And then thinking ahead to phase three, again, giving a nod to the previously approved master plan. The the work on Rec Park East doesn't address the deficiency in a Little League diamond. Based on the athletic fields needs assessment, the town is still short a Little League diamond. We heard from Little League that they have a tremendous amount of kids that are playing, tremendous demand. They don't have a lot of flexibility in their schedule if we have any weather. And so we could do a turf field, so that's a grass field similar to what's on Rec Park East currently to accommodate Little League and put in improvements related to serving that facility sort of as necessary or as budgets allow. Ryan has worked on quite a few more athletic fields than I have and he reminded me that takes over a year for the grass to grow in. So think about when you're establishing a lawn, right? Put the seed down, you've got baby grass to start with and it needs time to establish root system so that it can be played on. So I believe it's three seasons.
Three growing seasons to have a sustainable stand.
Doesn't sod help? Sod sod should help with that, shouldn't it?
Sod sod would be more expensive than just seeding.
Yeah, but it, but but it it's down in 10 minutes.
This is true, this is true. I I have done some sod installations. They they require irrigation really regularly to make sure they're established. At present, there's no water service back at this location, so that'd be something to factor in, but. So turf would be, if it was put in in the spring, it'd be spring, fall, and then the following spring, it would be ready to play on.
We do have, we do have a water tank truck.
We can price out what sod costs if you want to play on it sooner. And then on the next phase in the fall then, instead of rectangular field in the southwest corner of the site, just going ahead and having a a mowed informal space where you could have a lot of flexibility in play. So be that throwing frisbee, throwing a a ball for your dog, maybe some sort of pickup soccer kick around with your kids, just a flexible space.
What do you call it again, Brandy?
Just a flexible turf space.
Flexible turf.
Yeah, it it's really, that's just a mowed area. We want it to be mowed if it's going to be used flexibly like that, you know, for obvious reasons like ticks and and things like that. But that's the kind of space that's not available in the town right now.
Can I ask why that changed from the master plan approved?
It it's just taking the stripes off. The the stripes felt very predefined and I think that the feedback we got from the community was wanting to have a little more flexibility there. So maybe it could be striped if there was a need with just the chalk lines that after you mow it two times, it's not there anymore, but it provides flexibility in use, more so than really defining it as rectangular fields.
That takes immense amount of grading to to make a level field over there.
Well, so the issue with grading is that we want to try and balance cuts and fills. And so baseball fields, as you know, are level, right?
And I I I've noticed that.
Yeah, and so a baseball field, the cut could be spread out in this multipurpose field area. And then John can establish grass on it or his predecessor, if he sticks around. So, you know, that you want to be able to manage that soil on site. You don't want to be hauling any extramaterial.
I would say yes. But that that the soccer fields look like there's quite a distance from the road.
We're not talking about manicured soccer fields at all. We're just talking about
But that has to be level.
A flexible space that is relatively level, yeah.
But but am I seeing it right that the soccer field is looks like
Well, so just, just.
Couple hundred feet from the road?
Well, just to be clear, so this not soccer field, just a
Well, I mean, the green, the, the.
Graded out area.
The green plain.
Is it a couple hundred feet from the road?
I think, I think.
Yeah, I think this is probably like 300.
You have quite a steep slope coming from the road down, yeah.
Well, that's what I, that's, that's why I'm I'm bringing that up, I'm trying to understand.
Okay.
Yeah, that the steep slopes from the road would be a little bit impossible to to make it level.
Yeah, I mean, we had looked at in detail as far as grading with this, that you can balance the cuts and fills and you can sort of smooth out. It's a little more like just rolling in this portion of the site, sort of steep down to here, and then it kind of rolls like that. And you can balance the cuts and fills there.
It's a far smaller area than where the soccer than the soccer fields we have now on on leased property. The the soccer.
That's not intended to replace those.
I understand.
Yeah, and and the other thing is that we, you know, when we were looking at cost estimates, to establish turf for a sports field is, as I was just saying, takes time. It can be a little bit fussy. This could be a little lower maintenance area. We're not envisioning it as, you know, like a a sports grade grass that you're growing. It could be a lot more flexible. So think more like a park, park lawn type space as opposed to sport field space.
Like the great lawn at Lawn Central Park.
Yes, exactly. And then lastly, there have been some improvements to the tennis, to the basketball court. That court has some severe cracking in it and last year it was patched with an epoxy fill. But the the court is pretty well deteriorated, it may not have a good sub base under it. And so I don't know where schedule wise that was originally, but it's it's an improvement that needs to be planned for. I'm happy to do that.
I think it was raised.
Yep, absolutely. So I think I want to give you these because this is updated.
This is different than this one?
Yes, sir, it is, and it's on bigger paper, so you'll be able to read it better. Slightly updated, the one that you had been emailed, I failed to include the basketball court. So this includes basketball court improvements, just so that it's.
Oh, I think they have the basketball court one, but they don't have it in this big size, so that's really helpful, thank you.
This is slightly different. Yep, okay, all right, you got it.
What what is the circle in? What, what is the circle in, in where the, the north, where the north field, it exists now, all it shows on here is a circle. That, the north field on the east side, on the east park.
Um, well, that, that's, I mean, this is from the aerial photo, so that's the infill for that field.
Yeah, there is a field there.
Yeah, yeah, and the field is shown there. Um, it, it's, uh, it's probably like a fall aerial, and so the field is sort of round out.
Okay, um, but, but it's actually, it's actually, it has spaces and whatever.
Um, apparently during this aerial photo, it's just not high enough for a resolution.
Okay, fine. I, I, I don't care, as, as long as it's still a field.
There's, there's three fields on Rec Park East, there's no proposal to change that at all. Okay.
Yeah, okay. Good. And, and the red is the playground.
The red is the playground. Uh, the gray are the pavilions and the concession stand. Uh, the blue square is the basketball court. The dark green and orange, uh, sort of see-through color is the synthetic turf field. And then on, on Rec Park West, on the west side of the park, um, there are trailhead improvements, parking improvements, a Little League diamond, and then just the flexible play space. What we did, just trying to get a sense of, um, costs, and then also grant funds that could be applied to, we tried to, um, group the phases together that we had just run through, uh, in a logical fashion. And also recognizing sometimes there's time limitations on spending grant funds. So, um, just again, real briefly, you know, we talked about spring twenty nineteen, um, trailhead improvements, ADA upgrades to the existing concession restroom building and the playground renovation. Um, and then we've provided a column of, of range of probable costs for that work. In some cases, that work has been bid out, and in other cases, it hasn't been designed yet, so that's why we're giving you a range. We are also providing a column that provides the, um, grant funds that have been identified, uh, or, or contracted for. Or the value of donated labor. Um, so in some instances, the town is able to provide some, uh, services. And then, um, a cost per phase in that last column. So overall, so, um, phase one, spring twenty nineteen, trailhead improvements, concession improvements for ADA access, playground renovation. After applying grant funds, somewhere between two hundred and eighty and two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And then it makes sense to do the synthetic turf field with the lights. You wouldn't wanna pull those apart and do them separately. You wouldn't wanna upgrade the lights now, and then next year, go ahead and do a synthetic turf field there. That wouldn't make any sense at all, because you have to relocate the lights anyway and the conduits for the electric service. So, that, as you all know, has a, a grant opportunity of two hundred thousand dollars for, through CDBG. The lights are, um, three fifteen to three fifty for the lights themselves. So that's, and that is a cost that wasn't contemplated in our master plan, looking at Rec Park West. So that gives us a one point one to one point two, um, million dollar upgrade to, to put this field in, Rec Park East. Then, spring twenty twenty, I mean, we had an opportunity for, um, for Rec Park West to go back and, um, request funds through CFA again. So last year, there was a grant application made for CFA funds for park improvements. The town was not successful in being awarded those funds. But last month, I had a debrief with Officer Parks on, um, what we could do to make that application more successful. The CFA process is offering an opportunity to do what's called cloning your application. So we can clone the application, but we can also make modifications to it to strengthen it. So, uh, when I talked with, uh, Erin Droste about what's going on as far as trailhead improvements, she was really keen on making sure that there are strong ties to, to anything Empire State Trail related. So, um, provision of facilities that can serve people who are accessing the V two V trail to get to Empire Trail, or vice versa, they're coming into the Village of Red Hook via, from Empire State Trail, via the V two V trail. And having facilities at this location that, you know, is an intermediate stop before getting them into the village. She said those kinds of things can really help strengthen that application. She encouraged the town to apply again if they were considering, um, uh, this application for cloning, so.
So that was, that was an application for the baseball field, right? Or was it for something else?
It was for the field and the related infrastructure improvements, so, you know.
She felt that even the baseball field would be included?
She felt that the, um, facility improvements would be valuable. So things like the pavilion concessions, restroom facilities, and the necessary infrastructure to help serve those facilities.
And northwest.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Because the trailhead doesn't currently have that available, and, and that can be a big need. Um, it can also help alleviate impacts to, uh, the local business owners who maybe have people stopping in to use the restroom facilities. We actually just did a composting toilet system on the rail trail at Harlem Valley Rail Trail, um, addressing that very issue. The folks in the Village of Millerton, business owners, were really complaining about the fact that they were getting a lot of bike users just coming in these bathrooms and not patronizing their, their stores otherwise. So the village installed this compost toilet system to try and help with that.
Did you have any problem with the Board of Health with that?
I can tell you all about that later, but, but it's constructed, so ultimately, no.
Uh, I've seen Hudson trying to do that, uh, over here, and, and then out there, that's the bottom.
Yeah, ultimately, we were successful, but it's, it's a challenging topic for the Board of Health, but they did work with us. Anyway, so, um, so there's a possibility we could seek some funding for, um, facility improvements, and that's really what's laid out as, as phase three, along with a natural turf field, um, and then phase four, um, parking, basketball court, and then really, like I said, just grading and seeding this southwest corner, um, to provide lawn space. So, that is it in, sort of, something.
Can you afford to wait till phase four to put in a new, uh, more parking?
Um.
Because the grass areas are not yet established and therefore aren't playable, the way we phased it, by the time the parking is in, your grass is coming in. So now the facility is ready to use, and you don't have to bite as much of the apple at that time when you're building the grass fields. And so it kind of works out from that perspective.
Is it conceivable to do all three, uh, of the first phases together? Or would that be something that would have to be delayed phase three?
Well, if you want the CFA, you have to.
Yeah, I think it would depend on what the overall strategy is for funding it.
And CFA won't be announced until this December, so.
Until next December, yeah.
Right. Yeah, you got to know what you, what you want.
And, and do you feel that the parking lot improvements in phase four, along with the resulting site work, would constitute a good enough CFA application? Or do you think we need some of the elements from phase three for the application?
Yeah, the feedback we got from, from Parks was really, um, infrastructure around that supports the Empire State Trail is really the priority for funding. Now that said, they haven't issued their twenty nineteen funding priorities, and, and that may change. But she's just going off of the previous notes, so that they're really looking for ways to support trail development and, and related infrastructure.
Yeah, well, they need, you know, trailhead parking.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's what we were thinking, that there's a real opportunity for trailhead parking-related facilities that can also benefit the recreation park at the same time.
So, was that a, yes, that's enough for a CFA, you think, or no, parking may not be enough?
Well, I don't think I would call it parking exclusively. I would call it parking and, and utility infrastructure, so water, deceptive restroom facilities.
Okay, so you wanna, you wanna make sure part of phase three is available for that application, is what you're thinking?
Um, yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
It's much more compelling, and at this point, the CFA, especially for Rec, is just
Okay, so then my que-
mildly competitive, isn't it?
Yeah, they said, I, they, they got, they've got something like thirty-five applications, and they only found five or six of them.
Yeah, I think you could do it, but then you need to.
So then my question is the second portion of phase three.
Yes.
If we did, because it does take three growing seasons, if we included, uh, project phase one and two in the second portion, which is the natural field, could we do that? Does that logically make sense? And then have an application moving forward, um, with the other portion of phase three and pa, and phase four?
Um, I think you could do that. What do you think, Ryan? I, I think that that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think that's possible.
Okay, and we would have to have some porta potties temporarily or something like that.
Correct. Well, you're not gonna, like you said, you're not gonna play on it.
They're gonna play on it, you can't play on it, so.
We're not gonna play on it, so it's not, it's not an issue. I mean, we just know that we're.
Right. Right, it's the same point as the parking.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I would just note that this, this list now, excuse me, um, almost completes a complete, uh, rehabilitation of our recreation park that we've started a couple years ago. I know that the one project that's not listed here is being worked and, and funded through, uh, Parklands Funds, which is, um, the establishment of four pickup ball courts, is that right? So that's something that we expect to, uh, happen this summer as well. I'm looking at the Recreation Director and Commissioner. But absent that, this would be a complete redo of, of our recreation facilities, including the playgrounds and so on and so forth, and making
Playground, sports fields.
All of the facilities, not just the restrooms and the pathways, but all of the facilities available for people with physical challenges, including, including the one field. So, um, I think this is very exciting, um, and, you know, I, I personally think for thirty or forty years, we're going to have to live with, the, the plan that we construct. And so, wi, without having seen numbers previously, and knowing that this is a significant, uh, dollar amount, I was reticent to entertain having the, uh, artificial surface on Rec Park East. But I do think that it is the best plan, uh, for our community to, um, incorporate that with the lights. It doesn't seem to make sense that we would have a playing surface that could be used by almost everyone. That would be limited, um, for the duration of play, because I don't think, at least I don't wanna see, um, lights on the western portion of Lincoln Avenue where those beautiful views are. I, I think that the dollar amount is, um, not insignificant, but it certainly would make sense. We do have, from a budgetary standpoint, because the project has been pushed out, we have about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we thought we were going to be paying for principal and debt service related, primarily to recreation projects, um, in twenty nineteen, when we developed our budget, um, many months ago. And obviously, because we haven't even gone out to, to, uh, um, the bond market, which I strongly recommend that we do, uh, sooner rather than later, because interest rates have once again dropped. And, uh, we have a very favorable credit rating, so, um, we do have, um, a mechanism we would be looking at if we were to, uh, appropriate another, uh, five hundred thousand dollars towards building out, um, at least those items that I described. We could certainly pay for that, the next three years of that, the additional debt service associated with that just from the, uh, funds that we are not appropriating in twenty nineteen that were budgeted, because we have delayed, um, these projects. So, um, that's food for consideration. But I think more importantly, is, is this the best plan, um, for our community going forward? And I think it's a good idea that you're proposing.
Yeah, I mean, we appreciate you guys considering it. I know, you know, it's been a, a long process to sort of sift through everything, but I think in whole, looking at the whole park, looking at the need to upgrade the lights anyway at that middle field, and trying to find a way to, um, get the most use out of a synthetic field. Having lights on it, um, is really definitely the way to do that, and that will sort of.
I don't think we should, should, uh, and, and this may very well work for it, but, uh, we should, um, we should engage an occupational therapist whose profession is, is, uh, is, is designing these things and, and designing, uh, whatever, whatever the, the, uh, the, the patient needs, so that they can be active in a most favorable way. And I think that's one of the things we, we wanna know, that we're, we're addressing that.
Okay, and, and I think we have, we, um, we have the specifications for challenger fields. Our engineers have visited challenger fields. We, we know what's necessary in order to make that artificial surface, um, uh, capable of handling, um, individuals who have physical and mental challenges. We know from the most recent census, we have over seven hundred residents in our community with a disability, and I believe it's the consensus of the board that we would like to make our recreational field available for that population that is here today and may be here tomorrow. But today, Harry, we've had those discussions over the last year and a half, today is about, and whether or not we would like to entertain a modification. And if so, um, you know, shall we take the next step, which is, um, to run some numbers and see, you know, if, if we'd like to, to go forward with that thing? Any thoughts, um, you all have? Christine, Bill?
Well, I think the proposal is reasonable. It's, uh, well thought out and appropriate for, I think, the needs of the town. And I understand that the leadership of the Rec Commission is, uh, agreeable with it, so I would have, I would approve it, yeah.
Um, so, I, I agree with what Bill said. I like the idea that you mentioned of seeing if we could move the, if we're gonna put the, um, challenger field in the middle field of the existing, um, complex. If we could do the natural turf field sooner, because of the fact that you need three, 'cause in this current plan, you wouldn't be able to play on it until spring twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
So if we could move that up some, that would make more sense. And then also, I just wanna make sure, you know, and I know we're not at that point yet, but when we get to where we're really discussing the lights, you know, with the upgrade of the lights and, um, potentially longer term or longer time periods available to use the fields, that we, um, make sure that we get the lighting done in a way that it doesn't create more of a problem for the neighborhood that's there. So that we use the, you know, best technology that we can, and the best directed lights, and of course, energy efficient, et cetera, so.
I, I just wanna add that, um, uh, we've reached out to our utility, Central Hudson, and they're willing to, uh, you know, assist us in, in that endeavor of trying to get, they have some programs that we can tap into to help us with getting those in.
I think, I have a couple thoughts. One, I think the plan as it has been presented is a much better master plan, and it reflects more of what the community expressed us wanting. It reflects the recreational needs assessment, quote unquote. I wanna be clear that it wasn't a full needs assessment, but their athletic fields assessment, it reflects more of what was listed there. And so I'm really happy about that. What I'm disappointed about is two things. One, um, when we went through the public process, starting last spring and through the summer, this board and, and generally the conversation could not have been less receptive to a lot of those ideas that the public brought forward. There was never any posturing of being interested in, in integrating those ideas, and those ideas did not end up being reflected on the master plan that we approved. And so, because of that, what ends up happening is that this plan, although again, I'm gonna say it's a great plan. I'm really happy that the plan is the way it is. It looks like basically something that the engineers and Robert realized was a really good idea. And that's great, except that I think we've really missed an opportunity to make this a public process and to really invite the public into this discussion and, and part of the process of, of really. and to really invite the public into this discussion and, and part of the process of, of really feeling like they're part of the master plan. Because the feedback I got was that the public generally felt left out of the process. So I just wanna say that, and that in, in addition, I'm, I'm really confused about why we then approved a master plan and bond resolution and everything in the fall, and then as far as I knew, we were waiting to get the bid documents to go ahead and go out to bid.
No, I'm sorry, Sarah, I was talking about twenty seventeen.
Okay.
When we approved this in twenty seventeen, that's when the bond resolution was approved.
Uh huh.
Right?
Right, but we didn't update the master plan at that time.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
In twenty seventeen?
Yes, yes.
But we went through the whole process of looking at fields and things in twenty eighteen. I'm thinking about.
Correct, correct. That was when they got into preliminary design, and they brought some other more defined ideas about what they wanted to do at the master plan, and that's when you opened a public discussion about that.
Right, so I don't think we did.
And so we didn't, we didn't reach a conclusion about that yet.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's what, and we're.
Okay, so I asked that, but then you said we approved it, so I was confused.
Well, I, but we were talking about, well, we did approve a modification of the original master plan, and I thought that's what you were talking about. But that was some time ago.
But we didn't, but we hadn't approved the full version that Brandy put up on the screen with all the new trails and things like that. That's what I'm saying. The outcome of the summer discussions that was then reflected on our budget for this year that Robert mentioned was not approved as far as I remember.
Right, the twenty eighteen changes have not been finalized yet. That's right.
Right, that's what, yeah, the twenty eighteen changes, right, okay, that's what I thought, okay. So, great. So I'm just saying that we went through a lot of hustle bustle around it, um, including about the resolution change. I was waiting as a board member to get those bid documents for nothing. I know we did this. I just feel like there was a little bit of a lack of communication generally among the board with the Rec Commission. Um, I, to my knowledge, it hasn't been discussed at the Rec Commission. I don't know, 'cause I haven't been to those meetings recently, but that's what I was fooled. So I just feel like there's been a little bit of a gap, and I'm just frustrated by that. Just as a board member, I don't think that's really the way the process should go. But again, I just wanna recap to say, happy with the plan. Really glad that we finally got here. Disappointed with the process.
Okay. Sarah, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, um, if we, there's no way we have seven hundred challenged people in, in this community. I mean, if we do, I'm one of them. I have a, I have a leg that doesn't work right. But, but we, we have far, far fewer than that, and these, these fields are made, made for, for young people. And there are a, a fair, a fair number of them, but, but I do think that we need to include an occupational therapist in, in, in whatever we're doing and get, and, and get his take on, on, on these things. His design is far better than we had ever before. The price is a bit mind boggling, um, and right now. So, so I, I, I think we have to be careful how, how we, how we husband our money in, in, in this, in this thing. We have, we have, we have a lot of things we have to do and a lot of services we have to provide. So, uh, you know, three million dollar, three million dollars is a, is a toughie. I, I didn't happen to vote for that one, that's all. So, so anyway, I, um, I, I was not included in this and, uh, in this, and I, I, with, with that, that, having had that, that opportunity, I'm more impressed to say it's a, it's a done deal at this point.
Okay. Good, thank you very much, Harry. I'd like to address a couple of things. One is, I'm very happy with the way the process has unfolded over the last year and a half or more on this project. Um, the town, uh, went through a process back in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen to, uh, develop a master plan for this property. And, uh, the previous administration with, uh, some of the board members here, um, passed that plan after holding, uh, public hearings on it. Um, I can't speak to whether or not the process was one that was inclusive in nature. I can only tell you what's transpired since I've been here, which is at the very last minute after holding public hearings on what was essentially one change to the master plan, which is on one field, we needed to, because we went out and got a community development block grant, to make one of the fields in an adopted master plan ADA accessible for, uh, individuals to be able to participate in recreation in our community. Um, at the time, um, one individual from the neighborhood had mentioned to me about having public input, and I thought, well, there was a whole public process that just had transpired a couple of years earlier. But sure, let's have a meeting. Um, and so I invited, uh, what I thought was the entire neighborhood, almost, or immediately surrounding the property. We had a nice neighborhood meeting. Um, there certainly were, uh, many individuals there who were enjoying, um, this property in its current state. It was purchased twelve years ago for the specific purpose of constructing new athletic fields. But, um, many of the neighbors were enjoying it in its current state. And just to let you know, it's not a natural state. It's been manipulated several times during, including when we acquired it, uh, uh, years, a few years ago. Um, after that neighborhood meeting, then hold, then held three separate public information sessions, stopped the process, uh, got community input, and I couldn't disagree with you more, Sarah. The plan that was amended did reflect, uh, community input. It didn't have a baseball field up at the northern portion of, of Rec Park West. It had more of an open and natural field. It included many suggestions from not only the public, but yourself on having a multimodal path um, to access, uh, uh, portions of Rec Park West. And it was a very, very lengthy process that lasted nearly a year. Um, so I do think that that plan reflects changes, and we are here today for one reason only, which is because our engineers referred it to their sports expert and said, you know, ideally, you really should have the field paired with the lights. And have you given some additional consideration, as was mentioned, not only here at the town board, but also with the public? Have you given, or would you give additional consideration to the idea of having the artificial surface multi-use field on the eastern portion of the park? And that's why we are here, and I said, well, please feel free to make that presentation. We would need to have some numbers to understand what to do. This is their presentation, Harry. This is the beginning of the opportunity for you to comment on that presentation. So I just wanna clarify this. Okay, so it seems to me, if I've got this correct, there's consensus that we like this plan better. Can we talk about what we would like to do so that we can take a look at some very specific numbers in the initial part? We know project phases one and two are necessary. Is there an appetite and wisdom to do the natural turf baseball field also in twenty nineteen while we have all that equipment and we're going out to bid?
You have only seen this tonight. Can you want us to make a dec- decision now?
No, I'm asking you whether there's an interest so that we can take a look at the financial numbers between now and our next meeting, and you can consider whether or not, Harry, you would like to swap the fields so that the natural one, this is, it's a very simple question. Would you like to swap the field so that the natural one is on the west side and the artificial one is on the east side with the lights? I think you just said that you thought this is a better plan.
I, I do, but, but the public hasn't had a cha- chance to see it. Nobody has seen it till tonight.
Right.
So, so I.
Again, I'm just asking you if there's enough interest to put some numbers to it and how it would impact our budget.
I wouldn't do anything, anything really. I would make, I would go way out of my way to, to, to let the public know and, and with the, with the history that, that this comes with. I think the public has to have an opportunity to, to, uh, to, to provide input and public input, and, and there are a number of people who are very concerned about it.
Harry, there, there are public requirements for this. We would, yes, obviously have to get the public input and would want additional public input. That said, we've discussed these issues that Sarah, uh, uh, brought up earlier. We would want to notify the public that we are, again, reconsidering uh, the location of the artificial field, okay?
Do you not see this as a reflection of the public input, Sarah's comments, you know, taken, um, into consideration? Um, I, I guess fr- from our perspective, we're, you know, we can talk only at a very high level until we really get an endorsement, um, one way or another, from the board. So I'm probably speaking out of turn, but it would be helpful for us to have direction. Um, and so we're looking to the board.
But we also have deadlines that we are now in danger of missing with the grant funding that we received, I wanna point out.
And schedule for construction, like frankly.
Well, over a year ago, we got approval for this. So we have spent the better part of the last year getting additional public input uh, on this project, and, and we have benefited from that.
We sprung a, a design on them, on the public before, and, and we had immense, several hundred people, um, pushback.
Okay.
And so I, I'd be very lucky to move forward now until this becomes part of the, the public knowledge.
Okay, I was just asking if we should put together some numbers for our next meeting and if we'd like to move forward. Harry, we don't have to. We can continue with the plan the way it was before. I mean, we, we can do that, but or we could put our, our grant funding in jeopardy if that's what you would like to test it.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see, uh.
So how do we do this by a motion or resolution or what?
Uh, Christine?
Uh, yeah, you look at a motion or consensus, 'cause I would like to see a hard, different versions of numbers of what would happen if we moved the turf field up earlier so we could have it ready for place sooner if we're gonna go this route.
Okay, so in essence, you wanna get, uh, an estimate for one, two, and we'll call it three B, if you will?
Sure.
Okay.
You can provide that for your next meeting if you'd like.
Okay.
We can, yeah, basically switch the order and call that three A, actually, right?
Agree? Okay.
Like, I think we agree that if we are gonna do this, that we would like to at least see what that would be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Assuming. Yeah, I mean, that gets better with the time schedule and not included with the CFA anyway, most likely.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can tell you without knowing the, the numbers, it's not going to have an impact on, a significant impact on our budgets for the next few years. It's just not going to. It's not that.
I think it would be great to see that before we make a decision, right? To be able to lay out for people that we actually looked at that.
Yes.
We do that by the next meeting?
I, I already have some numbers prepared, um, in anticipation, so, yeah.
Let's do it on the twelfth.
Mm-hmm, okay. On the twelfth, we'll take a look at that. Um, and then, uh, can you help us with timeframes? I mean, I know Harry, um, doesn't want anything getting done on Rec Park West, but we, we need to move this project. It's been a year plus that we've held it in obedience. And so, um, can you help us understand the timelines? I think we're gonna miss out on bidding opportunities, aren't we, if you don't get this?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to suggest, be bold enough to suggest that at March twelfth meeting that we should, after a year and a half of stopping at the last minute, a project in process should make some decisions at our next meeting to move forward on this, or not just stick with what we've had, um, approved.
Why don't we, um, as a compromise, what if we do that, but also we, um, fill it in the agenda as a, as a public presentation of the new plan?
Yes. Yes.
And that way people will know, I didn't see this update to the agenda till today. I couldn't be wrong. But I didn't see the Rec Park update, so I'm assuming most of the public are either not here because of weather or they didn't see this update to the agenda and know that the Rec Park was gonna be discussed. So it'd be nice to give them some lead times so that people who wanna come can come, can see, maybe not, I mean, pretty much what you did here, but, you know, maybe, whatever, whatever.
Sure.
But, you know, a version of it that at least is accessible so people can understand, get their minds around what the new idea is.
Yeah.
Is there, um, still like space in the Rec Park page?
Yeah, totally. There's our space. It's just a website.
Yeah, we can, yes, we can put your presentation up there for people.
It's the worldwide web.
Yeah.
We can make space.
Okay. I cannot wait to have this topic.
Thank you all for your time, Ray.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for.
Drive safely.
Yes, you too as well.
You too.
Right. Okay. Shall we move on?
We can email the documents upon the Wednesday.
Uh, we have, uh, quickly an addendum to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Red Hook Fire Company contract with the town. As you know, uh, the state has mandated, um, that volunteer fire companies have uh, cancer coverage for their members. So we did not get, you know, this was a very recent change. We did not get, um, an idea of what that cost would be. We needed the membership, um, listed and to get that from the village. We have an invoice. Um, if we proportionally want to share in that cost of the fire company, uh, the volunteers, it would be approximately fifteen hundred dollars of this two thousand dollar, uh, premium. And it would require, believe it or not, another public hearing to amend the contract, even though it's relatively insignificant in dollar terms. If anybody have any questions about this?
No.
Okay, you're all familiar, all right. This is resolution number?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, thank you, Sue. Uh, dated February twenty seven, twenty nine, establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the approval by the town board of the Town of Red Hook of an addendum to Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement between the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Red Hook for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And I assume.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's set a public hearing at seven thirty-five, if we would, and estimated cost of fifteen hundred, fifty, uh, forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. That is, um, agenda item number four. Agenda item number six is, um, related to our community distributed generation project, our grant-funded, supported, I should say, um, shared service with the Village of Tyville, uh, sorry, Village of Red Hook. Um, we opened bids on this on, um, January fourteenth. Why did I think it was January fifteenth, Sue? Maybe it's January fourteenth, according to this memo that, uh, came out of the Energy Committee. We opened, uh, bids, there were three bids on the project. One was from, uh, Solar Liberty, and, uh, one was from Nexamp, and one was from Sun Common. Um, the proposals were all reviewed by the purchasing manager, um, Dennis Collet, who chairs the Energy Committee, and myself for completeness. All three were deemed to be complete and responsive. Um, the Energy Committee, uh, met subsequently on the twenty first, I believe it was, and developed, uh, reviewed all three proposals and developed this, um, a scoring sheet as was indicated in the R and P. And they have given you sort of some, uh, general, uh, statements to describe the three proposals. And they are, um, making a recommendation not to award, but, um, first to, uh, enter into, uh, negotiations with, um, the firm that they believe, um, uh, you know, who received the highest score. And so, um, you know, this memo is for, uh, your, um, consideration. And I, Dennis Collet wanted to be here to make the presentation to you, but unfortunately, he's, um, driving back from Canada and not able to be here.
So, who said?
So the question is, um, based upon what you read here. Says he wants to, um, continue negotiation with the. says he wants to continue negotiation with Sun Common.
Yeah, so I saw who.
Yes, Sun Common scored the highest in review by the Energy Committee.
So he's asking us permission to do that?
Yeah, that's, that's the recommendation. That's their recommendation. They all scored it, the project. And this is a compilation of that. So if you're comfortable with it, I would like to make a motion that we enter into negotiations with Sun Common in response to the CDG RFP proposals.
Did you fill out any?
Bill did that already? Sorry. Resolution number 16, authorizing commencement of negotiations for a project sponsor for solar PV, community distributed generation. Bill made the motion. The second was by?
Sarah.
Sarah, thanks. Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Okay. The next item is another thing for your consideration. We have been through our budgetary process, helping to support programs running through the Red Hook Community Center. They have reached out and asked us if we would consider, consider increasing our support. And we also, separate and apart, but would like to formalize, as we often do, our relationship with a service agreement with the Red Hook Community Center. And in preparation for understanding the level of support that they were asking for, we asked them to provide us with the list of the programs that they feel we should be helping to sponsor financially and what that value of those programs are and the level of support towards that that they are requesting. Currently, we give a little less than $4,000 a year to the Community Center, which is a very small contribution when you think in context of other recreation that we support in the community. We were just talking about sports fields. The level of support they're looking for going forward based upon all these courses and classes. And if you're not familiar with the Red Hook Community Center, I encourage you to go on their website or get a flyer and take a look at all the wonderful things they're doing. I'm confident you'll find at least one thing that you're interested in. And so that's their request to have an annual support level of approximately $10,000, which is derived from the classes they've listed and the cost associated with running those classes. Any thoughts on that?
Is the service agreement, we're not changing the service agreement?
We don't, we don't formally have one, and so we want to put that in place now.
So where is it, the service agreement?
I'm sorry. It should be here.
I don't have it.
I've got the list of classes. I've got the budget and a.
Well, that's not good.
A budget.
That's not good.
That's all I have.
Okay, so that never made it to our packet. So it's, do you have one, Chris, that we can make copies of? Okay. Would you be so kind to do that? Why don't we, well, Chris is making copies and we'll need time to actually read that. Shall we skip on to, I don't think we're going to get to reorg stuff this evening because we've got all our reports due as well. Shall we tackle some reports? That'll give us some.
How much snow is out there?
I don't know. I don't think it's supposed to.
Do I get some questions?
Coffee. Yeah, right.
Okay. So can we?
I just brought them.
Share with the labor. Okay.
They're going to put you on hold.
Can we start with our, well, the beginning of our packet has the monthly dog control report, Sarah?
Awesome. Game for dog. That's why it's fresh, right? Um, okay. Oh, animal, not fully, animal control?
Maybe.
But that's okay for him. Okay. As usual, January was a light month because the dogs were typically not out center up as much. So we've got zero dangerous dog-related incidents, two loose dog million incidents, one nuisance dog, and one wildlife slash cat recall. There was a swan hit by a car in reference to furry friends. And two dogs were spotted running on school property after hours, but dogs were unable to be found after Red Hook police officer attended the cat. So both sound like fascinating stories. And we're thankful for DCSPCA for keeping track of those for us. And I did mention to them about wanting more detail while we have dangerous dog incidents in the future so that we have a full report on that. So, also, I just want to mention, in case, I don't think anybody else has copied on it, but we got a recent shelter inspection report that seemed negative, but it also had no information in it. And I did follow up about that. And what that actually was, was a shaming report. It was a shaming report just for Jonathan Kipsey who didn't have a contract on file. And that's all it was. It was just kind of like a, like a.
Contract missing.
Very formal reminder to them. So nobody worry about the shelter incident.
Okay. Harry, building?
Which one?
Building and zoning, if you would, please.
If I can find it. All right. Building and zoning. There were seven permits, 24 inspections, 12 CFOs were issued. There were 40 complaints of open letters. That's high. I'm surprised. And there's eight searches. I'm not sure what even searches mean, but obviously they're busy.
Just to, I don't mean to correct you, Harry, but it's, it's 40 open or expired permits that they sent letters about.
All right, okay. Right, yeah, I guess I was aware of it. I am aware of that.
Okay.
People who finished their houses and didn't get the CFO.
Right. Okay. Very good. We have the police department, Bill?
The Reddick Police Department had dealt with 106 total incidents in this reporting period. They made seven arrests and they issued 35 tickets.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. We have purchasing, Harry?
I'm trying to find it.
Well, you'll take mine, Harry.
Eric here.
Okay, okay.
There were 33 purchase orders, a fair amount of business, up to almost $68,000. The largest one is salt, no surprise. There was a lot of work done on the RFP for the solar panels that we just talked about. We have, we're having some work done by the PCA, 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 our software vendor. Nine-year insurance carrier inspected the properties. And we received the speed trailer to be, which is a sign, which will be around town.
Yeah. Okay, very good. While you're at it, Harry, you have a water report?
Yeah. Water. Every, all, all measurements are, are better than their, than the objective. The, the, everything is working well. They're, they're, we're going to invest $200,000 of, of the reserves that we have. We have substantial reserves. So it makes sense to, to get some, some investment return on them, on the 200. That's, that's less than half of what we have in, in total. And having probably reading the meters, which always is a problem, but we have to, we're working on that right now.
Okay. Very good. We have an annual CAC report, Sarah, if you'd like to summarize for us. It's, it's quite lengthy.
Okay, so they had some new efforts in 2019. Everybody knows about the very popular first repair cafe that was held on Martin Luther King Junior Day. And the next cafe will be April 6th. They've been working with Corral Cooperative Extension, as was reported, I think, in our January meeting about the climate smart community program. They've been working on the natural resource protection legislation that I think relates to the moratorium. They've been working on their webpage for the town, which looks very nice. They've been doing lots of outreach in the town around the Energize program. And they've maintained an active Facebook page. So all those things are positive. They're a very active committee. And then they have some exciting things planned for 2019. There's a New York Reads program that's looking at the draw, a book about the drawdown, a discussion on climate solutions. So there's going to be an event March 13th at the Elmendorf. I imagine we'll watch their Facebook page and maybe our website, maybe they'll put it off there. For that, there's going to be a lot more like climate-related challenges related to that drawdown eco-challenge. They're looking at more supports to water protection and the community choice irrigation legislation becoming a clean energy community. So we've got lots of stuff going on. I think like what might be best is if we make sure that we post this report on their webpage so that everybody can read it if they want to. There's a lot of really great things they've been working on. But that's the basics.
Okay. Christine, you've been left out. Would you like to read disaster preparedness?
Sure. The committee looked at the town's website, use of the alert system and information that could be available through the website. It discussed ways to increase community awareness of the website and the information on it and review the emergency plan. They also discussed methods for making the plan accessible, both electronically and as a hard copy in order to easily revise and update annually. And they discussed communication needs and solutions if the plan is activated, expanding components of the plan to consolidate essential contact information and how to ensure that the plan is adopted by stakeholders. They also discussed outreach to the community with the purpose of sharing general emergency preparedness information and how best to ensure that homes are properly identified for 911 responders. Their next meeting is going to be on March 26th.
Great. Thank you very much. Bill, your intermunicipal task force?
Well, in, in weekly meetings, the task force has continued to discuss and review short-term rentals for the Town of Reda and the contemplated regulation of Airbnbs in the Town of Reda, and that discussion continues.
Yeah, the discussion I know a lot of municipalities are engaged in right now. We have a recreation report. Harry and Sarah, who's going to give it?
I'm not on it anymore. Go ahead.
Okay, Harry?
Okay. The, well, there's a lot of heavy winter work to be done. He's working on getting the wind screens, working on the pickleball court, getting, getting some, some prices. Has been, John's been working on the snack bar, virtually rebuilding the place. And that's been going on for a number of weeks, and it is about finished right now. The pavilion ceiling was done. We're going to windscreen for, for the pavilion. There's bluebird boxes they're going to be going to put in, put in the fields in the Red Park West, which are, which is, is bluebirds over there? I just be waiting their, their delivery? That's about it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Harry.
What, trees?
Trees. Tree preservation question.
Okay, so trees have been ordered for the spring planting. We will be on the south side of Pitcher Lane, completing this section of the project. There's still work to be done also on the north side of Pitcher Lane, just for anybody following the project. So expect more improvements there. There are copies of the updated tree manual that have been ordered. Everybody mark your calendars. April 27th, Saturday, there will be an Arbor Day celebration. Here, I imagine here, again, as usual. So stay tuned for that. Eighty tree seedlings have been ordered for the occasion. And trees at Reindeer Cemetery and the Red Park will be selectively pruned as conditions are ready for that activity. And they are, they continue to actively maintain their webpage. So that's exciting. And I don't know that Trails has a report here, but I would just mention the website reminded me because they meet on the same day. Trails is also looking at working on their webpage. So generally, I think committees are starting to really get out there and kind of try and do some pages, and that's exciting.
Okay. Shall we take a couple of minutes to take a look at this agreement? Go back to the agenda item number seven, if you have not had a chance to do so?
I don't know what I did there.
That's, it's what, it's what Chris just handed you?
Checkman.
Okay.
Didn't I make a motion to do?
No.
Well, we want to.
It's going from $4,000 to $10,000?
Yeah. Yeah, I know. I didn't look at anybody there.
So we got the money to pay. So we'll.
Is there anything in the agreement that you feel needs amending or?
Well, I think we wanted to.
We're pretty covered, right?
It's our standard service agreement that we have.
Right.
This is, so just to clarify, this appears to be the money to pay directly to the instructor for additional programming.
This is to go to the community.
Community center.
Community center is undertaking to run programs for you.
Yes.
That's the way this is structured.
Yes.
Well, this, yes.
I understand that, but that's not, that's, that was how you decided to arrive at the, at the funding support. But you can't, you actually have to, you know, you can pay for services provided, but you're not going to engage so with these individual providers.
Correct. That's not what I said. I said this, they want to use the funds to pay their instructors to provide classes. That's what they're asking.
Yeah, one of the things that I wanted to clarify is, are you then expecting them to run those classes without charge? Because that wasn't completely clear to me.
Right.
I do believe that they run most of their classes without charge, but I don't believe they run all of their classes without charge.
I understand, but if you're going to fund the.
It's not an ex.
But if we're paying.
It's not an expectation, though, because we are contributing a relatively small amount to our, our community center, that we would then be dictating the fact that those would be free classes. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I mean, do we have, I guess, I want to put an idea out on the table, which is that I'm, personally, I'm okay with the amount and sort of the rough rationale behind this, but unless, well, here, maybe, I don't, is there a deadline for this? Like, do we need to have it done now as opposed to like in a month? Because what I would like to say is that I'm okay with approving this provisionally, but I'd love to sit down and look at this in a little bit more detail and try to understand, like, what do other towns do with their community centers? Why, for example, and maybe, Chris, you can answer this, why do we have a service agreement as opposed to like a memorandum of understanding, for example? Like what, like what's the, is there a reason why?
Contract is a contract. You pay for a service.
Contract is a contract, great. Okay. But there's no reason not to have, like, an MOU would be another way to go? Or can you not do that with a community center as opposed to?
Again, contract is a contract. Doesn't matter what you call it.
Okay.
You can't have an intermunicipal agreement because they're not another governmental entity.
Yeah. No, no, I know, I know.
No, but that's the difference with the school. With the school, you can have an intermunicipal agreement.
Okay.
So you can do things with one another and you can, you know, there, there's not such an issue of, you know, this is governmental funds, you know, you can work with another governmental entity. But when it comes to a private entity, you need to be. You know, you can work with another governmental entity, but when it comes to a private entity, you need to be paying a fee for a service that you're getting.
Okay.
Right, so it's a different relationship than it is with another governmental entity.
I guess so, but I mean, like, we're not saying, so you said, like, we have to pay for a service we're getting, but I don't see anywhere in here, I didn't read every word of it, but that we're saying, like, for sure you're gonna hold Tai Chi every Tuesday or whatever, right?
No, what we said in here, and I, I need some more information, is that they would provide these programs with at least a certain number of hours of programming per month during the term of the agreement, and to include the schedule of services, it could be revised with approval. But the schedule of services is a starting point for, you know, the type of services, recreational in nature, senior services in nature, for the, you know, given number of hours of classes that would be held, you know, per monthly period.
I guess, like. I mean, is there other examples where we can, like, have it be more general than this? Because it just seems like if they drop Tai Chi and they decide to offer yoga or something, it seems like kind of a shame for them to have to, like, come and amend the contract. On the other hand, if they, like, close the community center for three months out of the year, you know what I mean, like, it just seems like.
No, but hang on, hang on, hang on, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing in the contract that talks about them having to have those specific classes, I mean.
What we said in the.
Well, it says, we'll include those described in the attached schedule of services, which I, is that this?
And. Yes, okay.
So therefore, it does say that.
But there's nothing that says that they can't replace Tai Chi with yoga.
I know, but it just seems like, why should they have to, like, send us a memo and we look at it and like.
It's, it's again.
I'm just putting forward that, like, personally, I would love to see if it's, again, if it's something that towns generally do with their community centers, which I don't know, have something that's a little bit more sort of like, we expect you to provide this amount of hours of classes to the public or something that's like a little more general, with maybe this is like an example, but not like something we've all committed to.
But not included as a service.
Okay, but we were counseled by our attorney that we are paying for specific, to help support specific activities and our internal controls.
Okay.
Is that we need to have evidence of those. And the only way you have evidence of these classes happening is if it's their first articulation with those classes on. It's not to say that the services agreement could not have language that would allow for a swap out of one.
Such as equivalent programs may be substituted with the advance approval of the supervisor.
Well, I just think that's.
Well, like Tai Chi, we don't contribute to that.
I just think it's.
We don't pay, we don't pay a nickel for their Tai Chi program.
I just think that, I agree with Sarah, it's digging into the details too much.
I didn't pick this list, you guys picked the list.
Who picked it?
You know, I didn't, we didn't pick it, this must've come from the committee center, but, you know, I, why can't we just contract with them for X number of hours of programming per month, period?
The committee center. Because we need a value, yeah, sorry.
Okay, for a certain amount of money, fine.
Well, you have, what's that certain amount of money of that service if you don't, if you haven't articulated the service? So if you're saying, I, I call my handyman to do this, or I call the professional plumber, or I call the contractor, there are different values for those services.
Okay, so then they report back on how they spent the $10,000, and they say.
No, that's.
Again, this isn't a grant, you're not allowed to make a grant.
Yeah, this is our, this is our job, and in particular, the fiscal officer, to ensure that these taxpayer funds are being spent on things that can be monitored and tracked.
Okay, well, then that, the point that Sarah also brought up is, or that Chris, whoever was, if we're, if the cost of, pick one that we're, if the cost of Eccentrics is $2,600 and we're contributing $2,600 to that, then that should be a free program. Then why should the community people still have to come in and pay for that program?
I, I don't know if they are charging for those programs, I really don't.
But couldn't the service agreement say, like, we expect, if we're gonna tie it to specific programs, couldn't we say, like, we expect town-sponsored programs to be free to the public?
Well, then it sounds like you wanna get even more specific, that you wanna have those dollars tied only to activities that are fully funded by the town as opposed to partially funded by the town.
I mean, are we allowed to even purchase services that aren't open to the full town?
To the, to the what?
To the whole community, right.
The community center's open to the public?
Yeah, but we don't have, but there's nothing in this contract that has an addendum, appendix B should be the community center's mission statement and, like, bylaws that says, like, we're open to the public, we're accessible to the handicapped, you know. If somebody tells us they can't afford a class, they get to come anyway. I mean, I'm not seeing none of those things hap, I'm sure they all happen, but like.
I mean, their, their annual budget is, let's say, for programming is $23,270. They're asking the town to pay for nine of those providers, and they're gonna pay for six. Isn't that the way it's wacked up?
It looks like they're looking for about forty-something percent support of certain classes
But it looks like they just.
that they've articulated here in this list. I don't believe this is a complete list of classes or activities that occur in the community center.
Twenty-three thousand two hundred seventy.
Yes, and I.
I guess, like, I, I get, I get the whole thing about specific services, I, it feels like really arbitrary, though, like, why we're, like, supporting painting on canvas and, like, whatever, combination dance class.
Well, it looks like somebody just took them out.
This is their request.
Find out why they took them out.
This is their, this is their request.
Okay.
It, it probably reflects that at the moment, they may have volunteer for certain things, so yes, Erin, line dancing, okay? You see that they're not asking for fiscal support on line dancing, and I can tell you the answer to that. Evelyn O'Brien, who was in this office today, in the assessor's office, is the teacher of line dancing. I don't believe that she charges for conducting the line dancing course, and that's why they're not asking for financial support for that. That could change, and when we go back to them next year and say, or they come to us next year, much like Community Action comes to us and says, we would like this level of support for these programs, we can say to them, okay, give us a list of the programs that you've conducted over the year, how did you do? How many times did you conduct these classes, what's changed in your program? And, you know, we'll put it to the board for consideration about what level of financial support.
Is the Community Action agreement like that specific as far as classes and things, it's like a food pantry, right?
I can't hear.
I don't see a charge.
It is, it is not that specific.
Yeah, so.
I'm not familiar with that agreement, Sarah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it's that specific that I remember, I'm just trying to understand, like.
Again, I'm, I'm struggling to understand why this is not sufficient, we can't move forward. I know the community center is doing great work and trying to figure out how to keep the lights on.
Maybe it's, it's just the way they're proposing it, I mean, it seems a little weird.
It just seems like weirdly specific when, like, if it was just a general.
Well, no, it's. We, hang on, hang on, we asked them with the advice of our attorney.
If it was like a general agreement, yeah, okay.
We asked them to list the courses and the associated value with those courses so that we know that we're paying taxpayer funds and we're getting that value, okay? We asked them to come up with this list, so this is the detail that's in front of you.
So are we gonna ask them every month for, for these?
I, I don't think that's reasonable, they're, they're giving you an annual list of courses that they conduct on a monthly basis. They're showing you the frequency, the value associated with it, the annual cost, and they're asking for annual sponsorship. Again, to do this each year would seem to be appropriate, to do it each month would seem not, in my.
So this woman you're talking about, when she does her line dancing in town, she hasn't charged us, she goes over to the community center and she charges them thirteen hundred?
No, that's not what I said.
No.
I think she volunteers.
Isn't that what that doc, isn't that what that document says?
No, here's the value, okay, and there is the sponsorship they're asking for, okay? The value of Evelyn's volunteering that line dance.
This says, but this says proposed fee paid to instructor.
That's right.
So either, so.
That's right, so that, that represents the value. Now, if Evelyn decides not to donate, then maybe she is.
It does not represent the value, that represents what they're paying an instructor.
Well, then, okay, they were asked to put the value associated with the fees for an instructor. That's what they were asked on the recommendation of our attorney. They provided it, they provided their, you know, flyer evidencing that they have these courses.
Okay.
So, how do you want it laid out?
So as Sarah, so following up on Sarah's question, do we really have to decide this tonight?
Yes.
Because we obviously have a lot of questions.
Do you have a lot of questions, we can wait, we can wait.
I think we just have a lot of questions. It feels very strange to me, and I'm also, like, fine with just moving on. If this, if you, if you really think this is the best type of agreement we can do for now, I, I just, it feels really odd to me, that's all.
What, what, what do you want?
I think we should increase the amount, maybe even to the 10,000, but it's like, where's it going?
This is exactly that detail, it is going towards these, I don't think there's any community.
Okay, and so, so one question that came up was, okay, fine, so this, the town's $10,000 is gonna support these classes.
Yeah. Yes.
So are those classes then free of charge? Do we have an answer to that?
Um, no, we don't have an answer to that.
There was a question.
Okay.
Are they, is it held at a facility that's, like, handicapped accessible?
The.
Well, the center's.
The center is handicap accessible.
I know the center is, but I feel like a lot of the classrooms are not.
Not really. No, I, I hear from seniors, it's not really.
So that to me is also a problem.
It's pretty awkward to get into.
If we're like literally, if, if this agreement says we are literally sponsoring canvas painting,
Lilies were banned.
Is canvas painting being held in the basement, which is handicapped accessible, or is it being held on the second floor, which is not really handicapped accessible? I just feel like if we are gonna tie our name to that, if that's what we're gonna do, now, I personally would have been more comfortable with something like we have with Community Action, where we're basically saying, Community Action, we think you're doing great things for the community, we support your mission, here's X amount of money. I feel like this is weirdly specific.
Well, you just asked for us to go and, and to do an inventory of classes being done in there.
It either needs to be even more specific, more plus.
Hang on, hang on. Okay, okay, more specific or less, okay, well, that's, that's a tough direction to go into, because that's two separate directions, but.
Well, if our attorney is saying, and I respect her opinion, if she's saying it needs to be listed like this, then.
It's probably.
Let's find out, I think they have more questions.
This is.
All right, that's what that part.
This is what we asked, this is what we provided.
Oh, really, is that what you? Oh, okay.
Okay?
We'll have to pass it on.
Thank you.
Do you wanna save these for the staff?
Well, that's your rose hax thing.
All right, folks, what would you like to do, it's time for us to.
I'll choose.
Thank you.
Close, close the meeting, is there anything you would like?
We do these and I missed them.
Christine, she just gave.
Have you decided not to do this?
Yeah, let's take it.
Well, I would say.
What would you like to do?
I would say table.
Okay.
What do you think, Bill?
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
Um, what, what is it that we can get for you for next meeting? Because I, I, I've heard go in two separate directions, just go in one of them. It doesn't matter which one, what, what is it that you need for next meeting?
Well, when I ask you if it's $23,000 is their budget, you say, well, no, they probably have other programs in that.
Yes.
But they're asking us, $10,000 out of the 23.
The county, the county, the county runs programs through there, the county brought people there.
Well, no.
What's their, what's their budget?
Hang on a second, hang on a second, hang on a second, please.
You're not answering the question, so no, I don't wanna hang on a second.
Wait a second. He had asked, are those the only programs that are run through there? The county runs other programs through there, they are not asking for financial support towards those programs. The county had their people come there assessing for ADA accessibility.
I think we, I think we get that part, Robert. So here they give us a list of other things that they do, right, that are, are apparently open and don't have charges, or, you know, some of them have open sewing, they have open kids space, you know, so those are other.
They run a meal program there, five days a week, the senior friendship thing.
Right, so those are other activities and services that they provide.
And they're not asking for support towards them, they're asking for support towards the recreation programs, yes, and they've listed the programs.
So. So I would suggest that perhaps if, if we feel we need to have a specific exhibit with this, that, why couldn't it say we're gonna, at least this many hours of programming? And then they list every program they give on, right? So if they want the $10,000 to go towards somebody being there to make sure the building is open for open sewing, that's fine. If they want somebody to be there for the painting class, that's fine. That way, we don't have to say which specific things we're supporting, just that there's this many hours of classes available. Here you go, within this list.
I thought I addressed that, which is, it's, it's our responsibility and, and for sure, my responsibility to make sure that the taxpayer dollars are allocated in a way that they can be verified. And so in order to verify whether or not the funds are going towards these classes, they need to propose where they want the sponsorship towards those classes. And so they give it the list based upon.
So you, you will also check a year, ten, ten grand a year?
Whose classes?
That's right, yeah, those are those, I don't know.
Those are, yeah, I just, I just stepped on them.
Um, that's, yeah, that's the level of support they're looking for, for sponsorship of certain classes.
So, I mean, we give them a lump sum a year.
Yes, towards those, those classes and.
We're, I don't know, I think, I think Sarah and I are just trying to make it easier for them and us.
What's your proposal?
I just made my proposal.
Yeah.
That they provide a set number of hours of programming with a comprehensive list, everything that's in here.
Yeah.
These other charges, and, and it would be done for this amount of money, that way, we don't have to, they don't have to come to us and say, we're not having Tai Chi anymore, now we wanna have, you know, Taekwondo.
Okay, and so we would need to ask them to associate a value to all of those courses, not just the ones that they've listed here,
Stay with it.
And then they can report to us. Right, so they're.
if I understand you correctly. So now the list needs to become more extensive, and so we need to go ahead and.
Well, but come on, we don't have an hour, like, for like, they have an hourly rate for what they think their programming is,
and audit.
and they're billing us for part of it.
Again, this is what.
Well, not part of it, we either pay it all or they pay it all.
No, they're, they're only charging us for part of what they provide out here, you know. Like, they've said here, it's $23,000, they're only charging us $10,000 for it, right, so.
Okay, I, I just, I shared with you the advice, which is to get the list of the classes and the value associated and the level of sponsorship they're looking for. We can, we don't have to take that advice, we can just, we can go in a different direction.
Do they, do they present you an annual budget, do they, do they do a budget out there?
No, that's not, that's not something that was requested, they're looking for financial support towards specific courses, not the light bulbs, not the mops, okay? Because that's not our role.
These are the specific courses.
These are the specific courses that they are asking for sponsorship open to the public.
So do they explain why they pay for all of it, and then we pay for all of another, why it's cut up six and nine? We're paying for nine, they pay for six.
They did not explain, but I thought I chose one to give you an example. I believe, I may be mistaken, that Evelyn donates her time, but we're Evelyn to cease doing that. And I know they have paid instructors and volunteer instructors.
They're saying it costs them $1,300 for her.
I, I believe that what they, it says proposed fee paid to instructor, so what they are doing, they were asked to give a value for the course so that we can make sure that the taxpayer dollars are not being appropriated in a way that doesn't have that relative value. That's what they were asked to give. If they didn't title it accurately, then, then we can ask them to do so. Does that make any sense?
No.
Really?
No.
Okay.
Hell, no.
Well, I'm just trying to explain what they, what they were asked to do on the, on the list.
But I mean, I, I'll vote for $10,000, but I mean, it's, I'm concerned that everybody's not so much in agreement with it either.
Well, I, that's fine, we can wait, just ask me how, what information you want, because I'm getting different requests.
Well, I think that this is a very fuzzy request, and only one is specific information.
Well, I heard either specific or just make it general, which is, we're giving you $10,000 for your program.
Both, both specific or, or general total.
But general would be like with what Christine said, a list of like, you know, you say, like, here's our mission, here's our bylaws, and here's a list of the classes we are planning to offer. We're not saying specifically which ones you're supporting, we're saying, like, this is what you are supporting, right? You're supporting this whole thing.
And your $10,000 will go towards holding these classes.
Well, it's, it's, I can tell you, it's not that easy, because the county is sponsoring some of the programs through there. So you're gonna get further confused by that if we ask them for a complete.
Well, we're, we're not asking them for the classes that someone else puts on there, we're asking for the classes that they organize and put on there.
Isn't that what this is, I thought this was a comprehensive list of the classes they're offering.
Well, there's things on here that are not.
No.
Well, there's things on here that are not on here.
This is the li- list of the classes, once again, that they have asked for financial assistance in putting on these classes for the public. Separate and apart from things like the Friendship Center. Um, they were asked with your advice, Chris, they were asked to come up with the specific classes that the, um, contribution can be associated with. We, we have an audit function that we need to do. I think we're, we're making way too much out of this, but it sounds like you wanna wait, and that's fine. But without a direction of what, what kind of, um, auditable requests you have, I'm not sure we'll be in a better position next month.
So that six weeks, a hundred and fifty a week, that comes out to the nine.
That's only twenty five a week, yeah.
Okay.
What's another example of something we support like this? Is there another example that we can think of, and I think that's part of our problem, is that it's not like we can say, see, this is what we do here, now we're gonna do it here, right, okay.
No. No. You have your own recreation programs.
Right.
Right? That you, that you already sell.
Well, that's why I brought up the MOU with, with the school district, because we.
But that's a governmental entity, it's different, I know, but it's not a good model, because you can't do the same thing.
I know, but I'm just saying. Yeah. Well, that's why I asked you though, okay, why it's different, why we don't have the same type of agreement that we're.
Well, we, we donate to, to certain events in, in the village like, like, uh, hardscrabble day, we give around.
Yeah, but that's. Yeah, but that's terrible.
Harry, I wanna, I wanna correct you, sorry to do it again, we do not donate to hardscrabble.
No, we don't. We do not.
Oh, we don't, good, then it's, then it's in the spring.
Okay? We do not, we do not donate to hardscrabble.
So do we financially support them somehow?
We reimburse, we reimburse some of the expenses because it has public purpose, it is a community event.
No. All right.
We do not make donations, wait a second, there's an audit function associated with it.
Oh. Yeah, okay.
But we give them a fixed amount of money, one number is my point.
It's associated with particular expenditure, Harry.
Particular expenditure, and that's what they were asked to do, is to give a list of a particular.
And apple, we do apple blossom day too.
We do not support apple blossom.
You know?
Nope.
No.
No.
Just our trial.
Um, just somebody gives some, some guidance on what to do between now and next meeting or month on this issue.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I, I think we're making mountains out of molotovs here, but you, you want a comprehensive list of all the programs?
I, that's my suggestion, is it our attorney's position that that does not work?
Okay.
Can we, can we discuss this? I mean, I, 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 I think if you have a comprehensive list of programs, you're gonna end up with programs that you shouldn't support. So I think you should be asking for programs that are the type of programs that you can support. Recreational programs, senior programs, that's what I thought you asked them for, was a list of all their senior, you know, their, those types of programs that are the types that you could support. Cause you could fund them here, you were running them here, you know, you can run them there, you're, you know, they're, they're operating them for you, that's just a program that you could run.
But you're okay with this list?
I'm okay with that list.
You are?
Yes. So.
I mean, we can ask them for more lists, I'm just not sure what that does.
I mean, we do.
There's an audit function that this list was to serve as proof that the taxpayers are getting their value and and more with the support that, um, they're asking us to provide, we can certainly expand upon that, but.
I mean, we tried to provide some flexibility in this language, we could try to provide additional flexibility to, to allow for programs, you know, of the nature described in the attached schedule, you know, and we, we said that equivalent programs can be substituted. So there is a, a mechanism for, you know, for changing programs, cause obviously that can happen over time. But the idea is, you know, you need to know what you're supporting.
Yes, and and I want you to think in terms of like, what are those programs? What if they decide they're gonna do a program and think of your most offensive topic? Something that you think is inappropriate.
Well, no, but that's what I'm saying, it's like some, for someone out there, like yoga is their most offensive topic. And now the town of Red Hook is supporting yoga at the community center.
All right, all right, all right. We're, we're wasting time being silly, as opposed to, no, as opposed to being adulting, moving forward on this issue, okay?
You make sure it's all.
I'm just saying.
It's two, two times a week at fifty dollars is a hundred dollars, that's every week fifty two cents a year, they pay a hundred dollars.
What's it gonna be, folks? It's ten, ten, I don't care.
Table says one these days. Two times a week at fifty dollars.
Either articulate what you need in order to support the community center.
So if they pay five thousand dollars.
Or let's, let's, uh, let's move it forward.
Seven dollars.
So then let's, uh.
I don't think there's anything missing.
We just saw this tonight, so I, I don't know why you're surprised that like we need some time to digest it.
How much show is that, Harry?
I'm not surprised, I'm, I'm, the time to digest is fun.
And taking it back about the timetable, like why do we need to have this, this meeting?
We don't, we don't, I'm just saying articulate what to do between now and next month.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this?
Well, okay, I think we did, but you're just not accepted in articulation.
Can we tweet it?
Okay. Okay.
I think we should table it, and if anybody has other ideas, I think we can talk about it at the next meeting.
Your body of.
Good. Okay.
Is this the kind of thing that's appropriate for a board member to say to Robert, hey, I had an idea between now and the next board meeting?
Yes.
Right?
Well, uh, uh, apparently not, our engineer wasn't allowed to say, but we have an idea and have it be presented here without, um, you know, skepticism. But yeah, come up with ideas for next meeting on this topic.
We have.
No attorney client. Um, I'd like to make a motion, we close tonight's meeting, uh, February twenty seven.
Any public comment?
Wait, where was.
Oh, we, I'm sorry, we have correspondence, I'm sorry.
Did we, did we do the extractive operation thing, we're doing that next meeting?
No. We cannot do that, yeah, I mentioned that, that, we cannot do it, cause we didn't get our referrals.
Okay.
I apologize, we do have one or two things of correspondence, can we do that, Steve, you're still running?
Yep.
Although clearly we need to conclude the meeting, we're all cranky. Okay.
Please, cranky for what, let me know.
Um, we had, uh, a communication regarding our community preservation fund and, um, exemptions. And so, um, that letter is included in your correspondence as well as, I think I mentioned to you a proposed draft uh, of a response, I think I communicated this to Diana.
It's gone out, right?
No, it has not gone out, this is for your consideration.
That's the response, okay.
I thought it was a good response.
Yeah, I do.
The response hasn't gone out?
No, it has not, remember I sent you an email, I would prepare a response for your consideration.
Yeah, I thought you, I thought you sent it back.
No?
Yeah, I mean, the only send that stuck out to me a little bit was the third one, like what about shortly after your purchase of the golf course card or?
Put Kenny's road on for next meeting, Greenhouse Lane.
Anyway, something about that seemed a little odd, but it's fine, this is fine.
Okay.
You might, you might add an article or something, I don't know.
Of the, of the golf course sale?
Does she move from, from one place in town to another place in town?
Yeah. Otherwise.
Yeah.
And she doesn't think she has to pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, she had an idea and it's good that you're like recognizing the idea and explaining why it's not.
Yeah. Okay. Um, we have a letter, Kenny McElrally, uh, we would be getting this, and we just got it today. Um, a private road name, a proposal, Greenhouse Lane, um, he says it's somewhere off Freeborn. And so I think.
I don't know where this is, is this a new subdivision?
No, I mean, that's what I wanted to know, he said, oh, it's for my farm labor housing, it's to get to my farm labor housing on Freeborn, but.
So what's it for? I guess we need to know what the private drive is, I don't, I don't know anything about this.
Well, it's probably. It's, it's like a driveway next to his house, and and then, and there is some housing on that driveway.
Yeah. Yeah.
You go up, you go in Freeborn and you go up, and I, I just think it's his driveway.
A private road has a different connotation than a driveway, so.
Yeah, to me it's a driveway.
Okay, well.
And and he has, he has housing in there, like trailers, something like.
But are they just, they're just notifying us like we do.
No, that, this is, this requires your approval if it's a private road, so I don't know.
Okay.
The post office may be after.
What the proposal is here.
Oh, I see, right, we have to do a resolution.
Right, but, but I don't know what it's for, uh, this is the first I'm hearing about this.
Okay. So we, we need a map, we wanna see the road, anything else you'd like to see, folks?
No, I think we need a map. I guess we need to check with the planning department and understand what the.
Where this came from.
And maybe the building department, what is this?
Yeah, where did it come from?
Cause normally we're being asked to do these when somebody's, somebody's dividing and creating a private road and leaving the town inspector.
Right, well, I thought our purview was really about the name itself, so, but we were just.
Of what, we don't name driveways, so.
I know, I know.
Well, he, he wants approval, well, this actually isn't a program.
Right. So I don't know what it is.
No, it started, it started with his request, okay.
All right.
Uh, a motion to, uh, conclude tonight's meeting, thank you for joining us.
I guess.